Rest that you'll stand for the pledge of allegiance of American flag and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O grace of God, we come as uncles, we know how. Lord, we want to thank you for a beautiful day. A day that we've never seen, but you blessed us to see it, and we give you the honor, we give you glory, we give you praise for it. We thank you, oh Lord, for those who have assembled here tonight, and we pray that all be well but them. We pray that you'll be with this body, oh Lord, as we make decisions for the good of this city. God our tongue as we speak, God our minds. We're not selfish in our prayers, oh Lord. There are many people who are suffering at this time. From the loss of loved ones, from the loss of homes through floods and mudslides, sinkholes. But God, we know you are able to restore them. We ask that you restore and rebuild and uplift them. Now be with us this day, in your name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Character trait of the month is discretion, recognizing and avoiding words, actions, and attitudes that could bring undesirable consequences. Very good character trait. We ask if we have approval of the minutes for public hearing in the City Council, April fifteenth, twenty fourteen. Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving those minutes signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Any item on tonight's agenda that you would like to speak on, please raise your hand. CNN Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. If I might, I have a point of interest and ask, uh...
Yes, sir.
Paul Beckman, representative for this area, to come up here, has a flight report he wants to give to us, and also Representative Kurt Wallace from District eighty-two. Uh, he is also here tonight, and I'd like to forward him the opportunity also.
Thank you very much. Paul Beckman, eighteen oh three, Tera in Prattville here. Every year, I come forward to y'all and kind of give you a breakdown as far as what we did in the last session. And of course, I know everybody, when we go into session, everybody holds their breath because of all the laws that we passed, and sometimes you just wish that we didn't pass any laws, but we have the budget to do. And some of the bills that we passed for this area benefited this area, like the DUI in reference to the individual that got killed on the boating accident many years ago, which we now make it a criminal offense, and there's no, um, issues in reference to as far as the penalty is treated as a homicide. But without going into all the specifics, what I've done is every year, I've come forward and I give you a little packet of all the bills that we have passed for each and every one of y'all. I think we passed maybe somewhere around six hundred bills. Probably one of the most important bills as far as this council was concerned was As you're well aware, there are some significant ones. the weed abatement bill. We always have to pass the budget in reference to it, and, uh, as you're well aware, this And, uh, our bill, my bill, your bill, got through the House, but it didn't get through last bill that we had, as far as that, uh, as far as the budget, we broke a little early. the Senate due to Mr. Pittman up there, because he wanted to give everybody another chance. We got out in time. We didn't stay till twelve o'clock, midnight, and everything else. But the general bill basically passed, and basically attributed to the fact that once And I think that was all part of the political things that you hear as far as on the air, they come up again, in other words, you comply with the same law that you have that's on as far as the two percent, as far as the school teachers' pay raises, and things of the books right now, but if it comes up, that person comes up the second time, then this nature. But we passed some significant laws, as you're well aware. I sit on the judicial board, and I sit on the constitutional. it's, then you don't have to go through the regular proceedings and everything else. And the judicial, we passed as far as changing the LLCs of this state, which goes into the You can adhere to the, basically, your provision that you passed. And if you want to take a look at the bill, it is in here. effect, um, of, on twenty fifteen. But I'm gonna take the time right now to just pass this out to y'all, look at it, and We passed the new Article Nine on unsecured transactions. We stiffened up some of the penalties as far as some of the, uh, cases like the DUI if you have any questions, you want to talk to me about it, because we have a lot in here about municipalities in here that you probably didn't, weren't aware of, and things of this issue. Locally, we gave some bills also to our sheriff, if he has some confiscated stuff that he nature. But for this area, I just wanted to make sure that you all got it and was brought up wants to sell. He has a regular process now that he can go ahead and dispose it in a quick, uh, quick to speed, and then, of course, I'll answer any questions. But let me pass these out first, okay? way, rather than running through the publications and everything else, so he just, he can advertise it a certain way and everything else, which is laid out. So we got that passed. There was a couple bills that, uh, didn't get passed in the other counties. Uh, I also represent Elmore County, and as you're well aware, there was always a big, um, issue in reference to the draft beer and Sunday sales, which the city of Prattville has been able to have and been able to, uh, operate on. Millbrook is basically wanting the same thing, and I think next year, they'll be coming for the same thing as far as economics and everything else. And the only difference was this year was tied to the Watumpah bill, and the only reason why I had the Watumpah bill is because Mr. Baske was not there, and they asked me to carry the bill, so that's probably the reason why. But next year, I'll be just carrying the Millbrook, uh, bill. Saying that, um, we still need to do some work as far as the economic development. We still need to do something with McQueen Smith. We still need to do something as far as the bridge over eighty-two to the industrial park. Those are my top priorities in reference to that. So we're gonna be looking for money in this next session. Um, I thank you very much for the last four years and the support that you have given me, and as far as the encouragement, and I'm sure that I haven't made a lot of people happy, but I haven't made a lot of people mad either. So the whole idea is communication, being able to work together with everybody. But it's been my privilege to basically serve you and serve the citizens of District eighty-eight. The new district of Prattville District eighty-eight will encompass strictly the city of Prattville, except for ten percent of it. Over there on eighty-two, around the golf course, and over around eighty, uh, around the, um, Indian Hills, that will not longer be in District eighty-eight. As you're well aware, the high school is not in my district anymore. Pine Level will not be in my district. I have now taken on as far as the, I shouldn't say my district, I should say the citizens' districts of eighty-eight, but they also incur ninety percent of Millbrook now and Casada over there. So you, it's, it's not even, the majority of the voters are in Prattville, the city limits, but this is gonna be your new lines. And, uh, I will say one thing, you won't see me on the ballot in June, because so far, knock on wood, I'm unopposed, and in the primaries, they don't put my name on the ballot. But again, I want to thank you for this time to speak before you, and my door is always open to you. If you have any questions or any concerns, please feel free to call me. I'm right now ready to address any, but any questions that you all may have. If not, thank you very much for letting me serve you these last four years.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Counselor Bowles.
Um, I just want to say thank you for the weeded lots. As you know, we've put a lot of energy and effort in that in the last two years. And a personal thank you for everything you've done for the district. Um, I know you personally, I know how hard you work, talk to you all the time, and we've got a good representative, and I really do appreciate it, but I really appreciate the weed a lot deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council member have any comments? Thank you, Representative, for coming and addressing us tonight.
Thank you.
Representative Kurt Wallace?
I'm Kurt Wallace, three oh four Maple Drive, Maplesville, Alabama. The purpose for me coming today, guys, is just to introduce myself to you. Uh, I am the current representative in District forty-two, and District forty-two, until we redistricted two years ago, encompassed all of Chilton County, and a small portion of Shelby County. With the new redistricting lines, it comes all the way down from Highway eighty-two by Billingsley, comes all the way down to Indian Hills area, picks up all the golf course, comes down below the, uh, fourteen and ties kind of corners there were fourteen from Selma, hits Highway eighty-two, jumps up around the city limits, and goes right in front of the Prattville High School, goes all the way over to the Cracker Barrel exit on the highway on Interstate sixty-five, and follows thirty-one all the way back up into Marbury. Okay, so the point of me coming here to say this to you, I represent an area that actually I didn't know until recently that was inside your city limits. I didn't realize that the area around the golf course, I was told that was not, but it is in the district, in the city limits. So my point is just to say to you that, uh, I serve on the economic development and tourism committees, I serve on the transportation committee, I serve on the small business and industry committee, and I stand ready to assist this city any way I can, to help you promote economic development or whatever else you need from me. All you have to do is ask. But I want you to put a face to the name, so thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Does any council members have any questions or comments for Mr. Kurt Wallace? Thank you, sir, for coming and introducing yourself.
And I do want to thank both Representatives for all the work that they do for this community. And, um, just a short, brief extension of this point of privilege, uh, at this point in time, I'd like to ask Chief Thompson to come forward and, um, bring two of his, um, sergeants with him.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for getting us to this point. Last year, y'all approved Director Thrash to go into contract with AUM to develop a new testing procedure. If you'd step up also, you need to be part of this. Um, last year, two thousand thirteen, after I was appointed, one of the first meetings I had was with Lisa Thrash. We talked about a new way of promoting in the police department, with ideas and goals that were addressed Director Thrash started that day, and what you see before you tonight is the outcome of a lot of hard work, long hours by her, her staff, and AUM. This testing procedure was very intense and detailed, as I think they will tell you, and started a new level for the Prattville Police Department to be measured by. I cannot thank Director Thrash, Chief Brown, and several other city employees for all the help in making this happen. And I just wanted to say that to y'all, 'cause it's, uh, been a real big boost to the police department to be where we're at tonight. And with that, I'll let the mayor present the new lieutenants with their badges.
Well, thank you. It's a privilege and honor for this. Um, just to echo some of Chief Thompson's comments there, I know, uh, he looked briefly over at City Clerk Kathy Dickerson, she, she played a role in it. Some of my staff, Meredith Dismukes, played a role in it, so did several other departments that had personnel to come in to help streamline and make this as, uh, efficient of a process as possible. But, um, anyway, it is an honor for me to pin this on. This pin does appear to be roughly about two inches deep, so, um, at this point in time, if Sergeant Davis would come forward and become Lieutenant Davis, um, I was planning on going, I was gonna go horizontal.
Whatever we gotta do.
Whatever we gotta do.
You said whatever.
Okay. And I was told about some of that, but at this point in time, try to do that as best as you can. And, uh, congratulations, and, uh, I look forward to the future.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Well, Sergeant Harry comes up. While he's coming up, I would like to say, you know, there's been a lot of dedication, uh, internally, uh, through the various offices and so forth, through the, um, sergeants, everything they went through. But then also, there's a lot of dedication behind them with their families, so it's, um, it's a multi-layer accomplishment here. So I want to also, um, appraise the families who have gone through everything as much as they possibly could, as much as you guys did. And, uh, this is a little bit of different setup here. I was able to sort of fake that last one, but in this particular case, I think I'm gonna just hand the badge and the markings over to you. Okay.
Mr. Family, who are the lieutenant?
I think a comment, uh, thank you, Chief. I think a comment, uh, was made there that, um, size of his family, he needed the raise, um, which, uh, it wasn't, uh, I, I cannot truly speak for them, but I really don't believe that everything they've been through has been about the money, has been about the dedication, uh, and the honor, and, um, and serving this community. Um, but at that point in time, um, Mr. President, I'd like just to mention a few other things. Um, one of the things is that, um, you know, things do not happen, they're made to happen. And with that said, City Fest was a great event this past weekend. The Chamber estimated that between Friday evening and Saturday, we had more than fifteen thousand people in downtown. I want to thank everyone who worked to pull this together. It's various, um, various, um, departments inside the city of Prattville, but then also the Chamber of Commerce, uh, local vendors and everything else. But, uh, I think, uh, this assessment is, um, has been made, and City Fest was a great, uh, great event this weekend, and most certainly a success. And, um, I want to thank everybody who's, who had some kind of input on that. Recently, uh, a league convention, uh, we had actually two former Prattville counselors that passed away, um, recently, Bud Erickson and Bobby Carter. They were recognized, uh, by a resolution at the, during the annual business meeting for the League of Cities down in Mobile. And, uh, as you very well know, Council President Wood, that you were there, Teresa Lee, um, office was there, and, uh, and I was there, and, um, I heard that you represented the city very well. Um, I heard you had a little singing abilities, um, during one of the, uh, prayer breakfasts that they had down there. Want to say that, um, you did represent the city very, very well. Teresa Lee also represented the city very, very well, and her, her role is, um, she sat on one of the committees, um, helping the other elected officials understand how valuable social media is, and, and, um, some of the pitfalls that, um, that they can try to avoid on that. Another area that we're very well represented in, and everyone up here has been presented with one of these, but, uh, the Alabama Magazine, but actually, in, this was placed in the hotels down there, and if you open it up to the middle of the page, it actually has, um, um, some of Prattville represented in it. So, I mean, this is very, very big to me. Um, these are some pictures, and I'm certain you all recognize some that Teresa Lee did take, and we have turned them into postcards, but on it does say, "Don't pass Prattville." And, I mean, how much better publicity can you get than, um, the representation of, of, um, of the counselors, um, city staff, and, um, this magazine? So, there again, I think, uh, City of Prattville was represented very well, and it's been a very, it was a very good outing down there. Uh, I learned some things, and I was able to pass along some things, and, uh, I hope that, uh, whenever our next convention comes around, I understand it is in Tuscaloosa. Uh, some people might recognize that as T-Town, but, um, anyway, I think that, that's, um, and I want to encourage everybody to please go to these, 'cause there are, it's very valuable. I was talking earlier with our City Clerk Kathy Dickerson, and, uh, some of the conventions that they go to, and I'm going to be encouraging all of our, uh, staff, all of our employees to keep up with all their training, 'cause that is one way that keeps us moving, uh, most certainly in the right direction. But with that said, um, let's, want to talk briefly about, um, Resolution Ten. It's a housekeeping item for the Field of Dreams project. The next step is hiring an engineer, and costs are fully funded by the ADECAC grant. Proposals were competitively sought. Responses were received from Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, and Constantine Engineers, and rated by a committee made up of city, YMCA, and Carp Deck personnel. Carp Deck has administrated this, uh, process in accordance with federal grant regulations and recommends hiring Constantine, and asks that you please move forward on this item so construction can begin. Uh, May seventeenth is Armed Forces Day. There will be a celebration with Dixie youth at Wetstone Baseball Complex, and I hope you all, you all will be able to join me at eight fifteen to take, uh, to talk with our youth and then throw out some pitches. May seventeenth is also National Kids Parks Day. We'll start off with the mayor's bike ride at nine forty-five at Upper Kingston Park, riding down to Pratt Park, where our touch-a-truck event will kick off at ten AM. If anybody here needs a bicycle, we can most certainly arrange one. Uh, I will have to say, I might have to get the chief of police, um, Mark Thompson at the City Fest, uh, one of our, uh, PD bicycles did blow out a front tire, so we might have to try to, uh, get that repaired. Might have to have a budget amendment, uh, that was a little bit of a joke there. Sorry about that. I know you guys want to get to work. You've all been provided, uh, the magazine, and I hope you do have time to look, uh, read through that, uh, and it's just a great economic development through terrorism. Uh, Counsel Brown and Counsel Boone, I wish you both a Happy Mother's Day. With that said, I send my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council members have any questions or comments for Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel Starnes.
Mayor, I just want an update with the House across the first and I Methodist Church.
Okay, the one on the corner.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Before we go any further, what's that address? Do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, I really don't. Um, one oh one North Chestnut. A, um, letter has been prepared to send out, giving them a forty-five, um, day notice to, uh, repair or, um, um, I hate to even use the word demolish, demolition. But, uh, I've also been in, in contact with the homeowner, with the property owner, and he does have a contractor under contract to come in and start working on it, and, um, but pretty much the, the mechanism has, is in place for one of, um, there again, I hate to say, one of three things. Owner to take care of the house, um, on his own, two, for the city to come in and, and have it repaired, uh, at city expense, and then it will then be, uh, taken, taken to the next, um, step, which is, um, the house will be auctioned off, uh, on the courthouse steps. And/or, or, um, there's a provision in there that if it's over a certain dollar amount, uh, there's a possibility that some, some payments might be set up. But then the, the, the third option would be, um, for the council to authorize the house to be demolished. And I think that, um, uh, there's a little bit of a twist on that also, because, uh, HPC, Historic Prattville, uh, Commission, was formed several years ago, and, um, I believe for it to be demolished, it, they might have to give permission on that also. But, um, uh, our city planner, Joel Duke, can better ask, uh, and answer any questions that you have on that a lot better than I can.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else? Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Before we get into our agenda, I do notice that we have a young scout out there. I don't know if it's, uh, if you scout leader with you or not. We'll let you stand and tell us what you're working on. I know you're down here working on something, you're not down here just looking at these council people.
I'm just working on communications, and this is my last thing for it. And after this, I need two other mayor badges, and I just need to do my Eagle project, and once that gets approved, I'll go to my board. If they approve my Eagle, then I'll be the highest ranking of my crew.
Well, congratulations. We wish you well. Thank you for coming. At this time, we're going to the agenda. We have a consent agenda with six items. Resolution number one is declare various weed lots to be a public nuisance and order in their abatement for Title eleven, Chapter six, seven of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Number two is resolutions to grant a retail beer on or off premises and retail wine on or off premises licensed to Veranco Enterprises doing business at Chappie's Deli. Resolution number three is to grant a retail beer license off premises only to Jerry Wood of Quick Shop Stores Incorporated doing business at Quick Shop one thirty. Resolution number four is to set a public hearing to declare various weed lots to be a public nuisance and order in their abatement for Title eleven, Chapter six, seven of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Resolution number five is to grant an extension to Miss Oretta Gardner Rice for repair of dilapidated property located at eight sixty-five Bunch Avenue. Resolution number six is to grant an extension to Mr. Ross Miller for repair of dilapidated property located at two oh nine J Street. Have six items. Do we have a motion to have a consent agenda for these six items?
Motion.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll be in a discussion on the consent agenda. All in favor of these items being placed on the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. These six items have been placed on a consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on these items now. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. Yeah, a regular agenda. First item will be an ordinance to rezonate properties located at twenty-five seventy-eight Cops Fort Road from FAR to B two. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, it was on the consent. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama adopted on February tenth, nineteen fifty, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May nineteen eighty-seven, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B from FAR to B two, general business. And that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the sixth day of May two thousand and fourteen at six PM considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not hereby specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. This ordinance shall become effective on its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for this ordinance to be considered, we need to suspend the rules tonight. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Rules have been suspended. All, all in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. And the rules have now been suspended. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Ordinance number two, rezonate property located at County Road four at Boone Vista Boulevard from R three to R five. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama adopted on February tenth, nineteen fifty, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May nineteen eighty-seven, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B from R three, single-family residential to R five patio garden homes, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the sixth day of May two thousand and fourteen at six PM considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on these items now. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. Yeah, a regular agenda. First item will be an ordinance to rezonate properties located at twenty-five seventy-eight Cops Fort Road from FAR to B two. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama adopted on February tenth, nineteen fifty, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May nineteen eighty-seven, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B from R three, single-family residential to R five patio garden homes, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the sixth day of May two thousand and fourteen at six PM considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Rules have been suspended. All, all in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. And the rules have now been suspended. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Ordinance number two, rezonate property located at County Road four at Boone Vista Boulevard from R three to R five.
the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10th, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May 1987, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B from R3, single-family residential, to R5, patio garden homes. And that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville. And that the City Council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the sixth day of May 2014, at 6:00 PM, considered said proposed ordinance, and that such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March 20th, 2014. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have been suspended on ordinance number two. We've been in discussion on...
We actually never brought the motion to suspend the rules.
But let's retract. Have a motion to suspend the rules? Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Okay, we're in order now. Been a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number three, surplus equipment from the Vehicle Maintenance Department. Counselor Sterns.
Yes, sir. Be ordained that City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: That the equipment listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Vehicle Maintenance Department is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Air compressor Kohler Command 12.5 engine, serial number C9687-36145. Parker Hanafin hydraulic hose machine. Be further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said equipment at govdeals.com, and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion to suspend? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have been suspended on ordinance number three. We've been in discussion on ordinance number three. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And that ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number four, surplus equipment from the Waste Water Department. Counselor Striplin, please.
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: That the equipment listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Waste Water Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Autoclave at Otoga Creek, Model 704-9000-09, Serial Number 5-80-1454-62. Autoclave Pine Creek, Model 704-9000-09, Serial Number 7-79-1338-103. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said equipment on govdeals.com, and that the proceeds be deposited to the Waste Water Enterprise Fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion to suspend? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have been suspended on ordinance number four. We've been in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? Item number four is adopted. Ordinance number five is to surplus one vehicle from the Police Department. Counselor Chambers, will you read it, please?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Police Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. 2003 Chevrolet Impala, PD Number 08-114, VIN 2G1WF55K939386307. Be it further ordained by the City Council, be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on govdeals.com, and that proceeds be deposited in general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have been suspended. We've been in a discussion on this ordinance, number five. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And that ordinance is adopted. Item number six is a resolution to rescind the award of bid number 014-005 for the demolition of the property located at 1030 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Counselor Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has a need to remove improvements placed upon the property located at 1030 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and to remove materials resulting from said demolition, and whereas the bids for said demolition were accepted through March 21st, 2014, and two bids were received with Woodland Forest Products Incorporated, being the lowest bidder, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville awarded bid number 014-005 to Woodland Forest Products Incorporated in Resolution Book 2014, Page 054, on April 15th, 2014, at the cost of $58,700, and whereas Section 8-34-1 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, requires the State of Alabama General Contractors License for demolition of project of $50,000 or more, and whereas Woodland Forest Products Incorporated did not hold a valid State of Alabama General Contractor's License at the time of the bid was let, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Prattville that the bid awarded to Woodland Forest Products Incorporated for bid number 014-005 is void and is hereby rescinded. Before I make this motion, I would like to discuss this. So do I go ahead and make a move and then ask?
Need to put it on the floor for this discussion.
Okay, so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This item is open for discussion.
If, Robbie, if you would come up here and kind of brief us on this situation?
Yes, I think the language here was, got us to a good start, that this bid was let. This is something the committee met on several times. We actually had previously advertised it and got no bids. We advertised it again this spring and received the two bids you referred to in there. The low bid was $58,000, and brought it to the committee, and committee approved us to go forward. We did start the process, notified the contractor he was low bid, and then during the process of gathering the paperwork, discovered that the General Contractor's License statute did apply, and that the parent low bidder did not have that. At that point, you know, that's the state law. It's sort of beyond anybody here's control at that point, and I guess my recommendation is that we do rescind this for tonight and go back to the drawing board and try again. There was a large discrepancy between first and second bidder, so it's my recommendation that we rebid instead of maybe moving to the second bidder, just because I believe we'll get a better value that way. So that would be, I guess, the second part of my recommendation after we, after we take care of this first business, is that we go back and reassess the plans and get them back in proper order and resubmit it for another bid, because there was a wide price difference between first and second bidder, and I believe we'll get a more competitive price if we readvertise, and I think that's where we're all headed. Other questions? I don't know if I covered that well enough.
Stay out of the floor, Counselor Sterns.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Does any other council member have any questions, comments? All in favor of adoption of this resolution, signified by raising your right hand? Resolution has been adopted. Number seven is a resolution to release funds for the purchase and installation of one control panel for the Janice Street Lift Station from Jim House and Associates Incorporated for the Waste Water Department at a cost not to exceed $9,828. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one STA-CON duplex stainless steel control panel in the Janice Street Lift Station, and whereas said control panel is available through Jim House and Associates Incorporated at a cost of $6,828, and whereas the cost to install said control panel should not exceed $3,000, provided that the existing supports can be used to install the new panel, and whereas said equipment and installation is a budgeted expense for the Waste Water Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $9,828 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Jim House and Associates, and funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2014 budget line item, Waste Water Enterprise Fund Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We've been in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? This item is adopted. Resolution number eight is to release funds for the purchase of one John Deere backhoe loader 310SK from Warrior Tractor through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 060311-JDC for the Waste Water Department at a cost not to exceed $96,878. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one John Deere backhoe loader 310SK for the Waste Water Department, and whereas said backhoe loader is available through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 060311-JDC from Warrior Tractor Company at a cost not to exceed $96,878, and whereas said equipment is a budgeted expense for the Waste Water Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $96,878 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Warrior Tractor Company or John Deere Company, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2014 budget line items, Waste Water Enterprise Fund Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Been a discussion. All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number nine is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a competitive video services agreement with Bell South Communications doing business as AT&amp;T Alabama for IP-enabled video services. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas AT&amp;T Alabama is in the process of modifying its existing telecommunications network to provide an integrated protocol network as described in Attachment A, and whereas the IP network upgrade will involve use of the city's right-of-way, and whereas the City Council adopted Resolution Book 2013, Page 153, to enter into an agreement with Local Government Services LLC for cable television franchise management services to negotiate a new video services agreement with AT&amp;T, and said negotiations are now complete. And whereas the term of this agreement shall be through April 30th, 2024, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to enter into a competitive video services agreement with Bell South Communications doing business as AT&amp;T Alabama. Mr. President, I so move.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We've been in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number 10 is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Constantine Engineering Incorporated to provide engineering services for CDBG project number LR-CE-PF-13-008 for the Field of Dream ADA-compliant baseball field. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville directly contacted known qualified firms in order to obtain proposals for the provision of engineering services for community development block grant community enhancement project number LR-CE-PF-13-008, and whereas based on the city's review of the proposals received, using the city's rating system, Constantine Engineering Incorporated has been deemed qualified for the services called for, and the proposed contract price is considered appropriate and reasonable, and whereas it has been determined that this is in the best interest of the City of Prattville to enter into a contract with Constantine Engineering Incorporated, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: Section 1, that based on the city's understanding of procurement policy of ADECA, the acceptance of the proposal of Constantine Engineering Incorporated for the provision of professional services for CDBG project number LR-CE-PF-13008 has been determined to be in the best interest of the City of Prattville. Section 2, that the City of Prattville enter into an agreement with Constantine Engineering Incorporated for the provision of said professional services in an amount not to exceed $67,284.95 for engineering and inspection, and $5,500 for survey and geotechnical. These costs shall be paid with CDBG funds. Section 3, that this action is based on the current interpretation of ADECA procurement policy, which is acknowledged by this resolution and ADECA policy. Section 4, that Bill Gillespie Jr. in his capacity as mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to negotiate and execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Prattville. Mr. President, I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Been a discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption, signified by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. That exhausts our agenda at this time. Anyone making, like to make comments at this time on any other item, please come forward. Mayor, you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir, and I promise I will keep them very, very quick. We talked a little bit about communications a little bit earlier, and just like to recognize AT&amp;T, Representative Ty Phondren and Mickey Harbin, they're back here, and thank them for being a part of the communications that goes around, all around Prattville in this area, because Prattville would be pretty boring if we didn't have communications in this area, so I've enjoyed working with them over the last period of time. But also, just briefly saying, I'm glad to be home. My bed is going to feel so good tonight, and I'm just glad to see you guys and help you feel the same way with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Striplin?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Sterns?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambers?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Counselor.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of recognitions tonight. First of all, I would like to say we're glad to have Devin Peake back with us. If you don't know him, from the Urban Management Department. He is a proud new father of Riley Ann, and we're all excited that we have a new member in green. I'm sure she's going to be wearing green every day. Also, if you didn't know, tomorrow is the mayor's birthday, so birthday greetings out to you.
With that being said, we do wish you a happy birthday. Hope everything goes well. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you always, employees, for what you do, all employees. Thank the council for working as hard as they do. Thank you, Mayor, for working as hard as you do. This job gets to be tough sometimes, but continue to do what you do, work what you commit as you do. You're doing a good job, and I know it's stressing and taxing sometimes, but thank you. With that being said, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion, or we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.